With Commissioner Sheehan, this new ministry began in late June and is a mission and extension campus of the First United Methodist Church of Winter Park. Recently, the ministry partnered with Commissioner Sheehan and the OPD to host a child's bike safety day called Bike Blast in the Reeves Terrace community. And over thirty children brought their bikes, need to be repaired or replaced, and they were taught bike safety. After the invocation, we'll have the pledge led today by District Two Commissioner Tony Ortiz. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Creator and sustainer of all that is or ever will be, accept our gratitude for this day and all its many blessings. We are thankful for all that you have given to us, for the opportunities to make a change, and for the challenges that are to be overcome. We ask that you guide and direct the assembled leaders of this community. Grant that all who are gathered here today may be mindful of their responsibility to the people of this city, and that they may seek your strength and direction within all decisions that will be made. May all of us continue to be challenged to give our best, to be assured of your presence within all things, and to build with confidence a better tomorrow for the city beautiful Orlando. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the liberty of all, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a great and just world.
Officially call our proceedings to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make a determination of quorum, please?
Commissioner Diamond?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Ings?
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Let's take up for consideration the minutes from the September 12th, 2011, agenda review, city council meetings, the 5:01 PM budget hearing, and the August 29th council meeting minutes as revised per direction at the September 12th city council meeting. Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, so the motion carries. That brings us to awards presentations and recognitions, and I want to call on Alan Johnson, our Orlando venues director, to introduce Ron Legler for a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here for you today to talk about one of our partners that brings us the Broadway series at the Bob Car Performing Arts Center. Florida Theatrical has been presenting Broadway at Bob Car Performing Arts Center for many years in conjunction with Broadway Across America. When our agreement expired with them in 2008, Ron Legler of Florida Theatrical Association, the local Orlando-based presenter, approached us about entering into a new agreement with more favorable terms for the city. We came to terms and city council approved a new contract that has proven to be very financially rewarding to the city. This has and will be a great partnership into the future. This fiscal budget year alone, we will receive a total of $1.6 million in profit from the Broadway series, and this also includes a bonus payment that was negotiated as part of their contract. And today, I'd like to call up Ron Legler and have him tell us more about that. Ron?
My name is Ron Legler, and I love Orlando. I'd like to thank you, Mayor Dyer, and the members of city council for your time today. I'm the president and CEO of Florida Theatrical Association, and we're the nonprofit presenters of Fair Winds Broadway Across America Orlando. I have nothing but good news today, and don't worry, I'm not going to ask this council for money either. I know that's rare coming from an arts leader, but it's indeed true. In fact, I'm here to deliver a check, a big check, in the amount of $204,729.01, which represents nothing but the city of Orlando's percentage of profit from our 2010-2011 Broadway series in Orlando. I would like to thank Alan Johnson for his dedication to this city. Alan's knowledge of the touring business and ability to manage the city's venues efficiently has helped us become the number three largest one-week Broadway Across America market in the country. Before this council, and Alan Johnson helped me change the contract a few years ago, ninety percent of all the touring profits stayed in New York with the Broadway producers. Now you can see by this check next to me that that's no longer the case. Florida Theatrical has taken its profit share and invested in downtown Orlando. We recently purchased 25,000 square feet in a multi-use building known as the Sanctuary. We developed new offices for our organization in the heart of the city. We also created the Mez, a unique urban event space located on the second floor. And I'm ecstatic to tell you all that we booked our 75th wedding in just nine months. And we finally built the Abbey, with its iconic old-fashioned Broadway marquee. This 200-seat community live performance venue offers a home for so many organizations that just needed a place to perform. The Abbey is an affordable place that local organizations can call home and is currently booked through May of 2012. With great local organizations like the Orlando Ballet, the Central Florida Jazz Society, Emotions Dance Company, and the Orlando Philharmonic, the Abbey is also establishing itself as a destination for great live entertainment with national acts like Foster the People, Modern English, and An Evening with Chloris Leachman. We are so proud of our new home, and we're so thankful to many city officials and employees, especially Mayor Dyer, Commissioner Sheehan, Frank Billingsley, Timothy Johnson, Thomas Chapman, and Devon Barber, for their support and guidance during the construction phase and continued support after we opened. When I say I love Orlando, I really mean it. I love Orlando, and I know the best part is, is that Orlando loves me back. Nat King Cole said it best, "The greatest thing you'll ever learn is just to love and be loved in return." Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's with great pride I present you with this check.
Central Florida Hotel and Lodging Association held their annual Patriots' Day award ceremony, and this year, three Orlando firefighters received an award for their bravery, and I'd like to take an opportunity to recognize them here today. The Orlando Fire Department responded to a house fire, and while fighting the fire, two firefighters fell through the floor, and they were dangling between the first floor and the basement, so picture them hanging down. With the fire still active on the first floor and in zero visibility due to heavy smoke conditions, Lieutenant Anthony Avila, actually, stand-up lieutenant, want to read about you here, using his Halligan hook, was able to rescue both firefighters and assist them to safety, preventing a potential tragic outcome. For his actions, Lieutenant Avila received the 2011 Patriots' Day Heroism Award. Now firefighter Aaron Rhodes could stand. The Orlando Fire Department responded to an apartment fire with fire showing, and upon arrival, the firefighters learned that there were two occupants trapped on the second floor. And I think we talked about this event at a prior meeting. The stairwell was blocked with heavy fire, and the occupied apartment was quickly filling with deadly smoke. While three members of his crew began fighting the fire, firefighter Aaron Rhodes took a ladder and climbed to the second-floor balcony. Locating a physically challenged occupant, he assisted them to safety via the ground ladder. Then he returned to the balcony once again and located a mentally challenged occupant who was assisted to safety, and then he returned to the balcony a third time and entered the apartment to make sure that there were no other occupants inside. For his actions, firefighter Aaron Rhodes received the 2011 Patriots' Day Heroism Award. And one of our firefighters, who was an honorary, could not be with us today, but I think we ought to recognize his valoury as well. Firefighter Kamula Kong was off-duty at a local YMCA. While walking past the pool area, firefighter Kong noticed a mother frantically searching for her child. Imagine how that mother was feeling. Firefighter Kong immediately went into the pool, saw the child laying at the bottom of the pool. He dove in, retrieved the child, handing off the lifeless body to the lifeguard on duty. Then firefighter Kong then assessed the child and found him to be lifeless, no pulse, no respirations. He began CPR and was assisted by the lifeguard. The child was revived on the scene and has since made a complete recovery for his actions. Let's come get a picture. And Chief, you want to join us too? Where are you?
Chief, how many of these firefighters are from District Two? Thank you. I just want to make a point.
This Wednesday at 7 o'clock, the city of Orlando will host its first NHL professional hockey game at the new Amway Center between the Tampa Bay Lightning and the St. Louis Blues. I'm looking forward to being able to showcase the Amway Center for the NHL and see what a great experience we can have in addition to playing basketball. We're nearing the end of our redistricting process. At last week's meeting, the redistricting committee narrowed the maps down to three proposals. Two were based on public proposal and public comments, and one incorporates the elements of another public proposal. There'll be another public hearing tomorrow night here in city council chambers, and after that, the final maps will be presented to the council here in an October 3rd workshop, and they will go before council for adoption in the subsequent October meetings. I want to thank those members of the redistricting advisory board. I had an opportunity to present at their last meeting, and they've taken a lot of public input and done a lot of good work, so hopefully the product will be something that we are able to adopt very quickly. In the last couple of weeks, the Delaney Park neighborhood and some of the surrounding neighborhoods have had a number of daytime burglaries, and as those were beginning and we were becoming concerned about that, I've met with the chief and our OPD Communication Relations officers to make sure we are going to be proactive about doing that. And in less than a week, OPD has done some great police work in concert with the community, getting some tips, and actually, one of the Delaney Park residents took some video that helped us lead to several arrests. We have, I guess, had four or five arrests. We've recovered stolen property, cleared at least five of those burglaries. Is it more than that now, Chief? Does that sound about right? About right. And I'll be joining Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Diamond this evening for a neighborhood meeting to inform the residents of Delaney Park and Thornton Park about the actions that have been taken and the arrests that have been made, because sometimes the good information doesn't get out as quickly as the other information. And Commissioner Stewart, just happenstance, I was driving to the Soto Target yesterday to buy a birthday present for my mother and came across two squad cars on Edgewater Drive, and they had just made an arrest of the burglar in College Park that had been stealing bicycles. So I guess he was riding along on one bike with another one beside him. Not obvious in any way. And a firefighter from Station Three made the call into OPD, and we were able to make the arrest and use serial numbers off the bikes to identify him. I had an opportunity last week to tour the VA, and I took our veterans committee with us, Paul Hayne, about 12 other members. It is a tremendous facility and will serve our veteran population well, and that is expected to begin opening. They're actually going to open it in pieces or different stages, but that will begin opening next summer. And I also want to mention that we have Veteran's Day Parade, which our Veterans Advisory Council conducts every year, and that'll be coming up on November 12th. I just have a couple of things I want to mention off of the agenda itself. On the agenda, Lisa and the Family Parks and Rec Department have been doing a great job on operational efficiencies, and because of that, they have identified almost half a million bucks that they saved through efficiencies, which we can reallocate into our parks initiatives. So thank you for that innovative work. And then the second one is all of these guys out here that I suspect about everybody is going to comment on one way or another, but we are renewing our annual agreements for each of our city's five main street districts, Ivanhoe Village, College Park, Downtown South, Mills 50, and Audubon Park. And we've had tremendous success with that program. Between those five main streets, over 1,000 jobs and 177 new businesses. And the good news is, we are adding two more today. We're adding the Semeron Business Partnership and Church Street District, and I know that Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Lyman will be delighted with that. Commissioner Ortiz, I know, has been working tremendously hard with the Semeron Business Partnership to achieve that status, so congratulations on that. With that, we will move to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda has a number of items that are acted on through a single vote. We give each of the commissioners an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and also update you on items of interest from their districts, and we take turns on who goes first. And just before I call on Commissioner Ortiz, I need to let you know that we need to delete item C11, the one that Commissioner Ings pointed out had an error in it, and apparently, we need to check this out, Paradise already has amoeba grant, so we can't do a BAP grant until that is concluded. So we're going to delete this for now. With that, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Today's an exciting day. You said it best. We have accomplished a lot as a community, so we'll be celebrating that in a few seconds. But last week, I met with the owner, the new owner of the Daniel Plaza, Mr. Carlos Garcia Velez. During our meeting, he agreed to change the name of the Daniel Plaza to the Semeron Plaza, which is another great achievement to the revitalization efforts of our Semeron Corridor. We're starting new all over, so he goes as well. Hispanic Heritage Kickoff Event last Thursday was a total success. Once again, thank you, Mayor and commissioners, for supporting this celebration. My sincere gratitudes to Marcia Hope Goodwin, Michael Lawrence, and our fourth batter, Alicia Ramirez, for planning a great event. I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Blanquita Traball from Casa de Mexico for such an exquisite event last Saturday at the Bob Car. I was able to represent the city and read a proclamation on behalf of the mayor. Once again, the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra was amazing, and this year's guest Mexican tenor, Alan Pingaron, was remarkable. This gentleman is, he is blind, and he has a voice that, and I know some of the members, some of our people here, our guests here today were at the concert, and this gentleman was just outstanding. We hope to see him back here in the city of Orlando once our Dr. Phillips Performing Arts gets completed. So I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Dr. Jean Lopez, president of the Association Board in Kenya of Orlando, on their 34th anniversary. The association is located in the county, but many residents of the city are member and enjoy the wonderful events and activities that take place at this location. My sincere congratulations to Dr. Lopez and all the members of this great organization. I was informed that the first Semeron Business Partnership after our event last Tuesday was a total success. I was not able to attend due to the city redistricting meeting, but I am happy that it went so well. Along these lines, I want to congratulate the Semeron Business Partnership for their leadership as we accept the Orlando Market Street designation under the Orlando Main Street Program. Here with us today are President Mr. Juan Triana. Will you guys stand up as I mentioned you, because you guys need special recognition since you guys have worked so well in less than a year? Board members, Ms. Gladys Vandenberg, Ms. Jackie Mayers, Mr. Lou Soto, Ms. Marie Boyle, Mr. Jose Yala, and Ms. Leila Eagle. Let's please give them a huge round of applause. These board members have worked really hard and has transformed our business community to become a force not to reckon with. Let's please give them also a great recognition for all the great cleanups we had in the Semeron Corridor, and things are really changing in the Semeron Corridor. We've gotten all kinds of comments commending us, but this goes to the community. And Juan and the board, you guys have done a tremendous job, so kudos to you guys. This is truly a dream come true. Three and a half years ago, we didn't have our community as organized as we do today. Thanks to the effort of my aide, Anna Cruz, city staff, business, and community leaders, we created a neighborhood leaders council and a business council, which today we now has a Semeron Business Partnership. Indeed, we have a revolution going on to better our community, and for this, I want to thank you, Mayor, and commissioners for your support. And special thanks to city planner Bruce Hosfield and economic development coordinator Pauline Eaton for your tireless efforts as we guide our community to new heights. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District Three, Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and congratulations, Commissioner Ortiz. That's a wonderful accomplishment, and I appreciate your hard work in it. I'd like to cover a couple of things that are on the agenda, first of all. So let me say welcome to Kat and to Andrea and to Andrea. I think I've got them all. Thank you all for being here today as part of our group. Today on C1, we'll be approving the Main Street district agreements for College Park Partnership, Ivanhoe Village Main Street, and of course, the Audubon Park Garden District. So we'll share a couple of ideas in just a minute with that. So I also want to say, today on C9, we'll be approving a business assistance agreement with the croissant factory, Philippe Kahat, pronounce it.
Philippe.
Philippe, that's close enough. The Petite Pleasures, it's a great place, a new French bakery in downtown College Park. Thank you for being there. We've got a couple of new places that have opened up. I mentioned last week about your place and about the Sweat Factory. Have you opened those on the same Saturday was just kind of appropriate, I think. So thank you very much. A great place to eat. If you haven't had a chance to try that yet, Philippe, great job over there. Let me cover a couple of things with you also. I want to say a special thank you to all of our staff this past weekend. The Florida Coastal Cleanup was this past weekend. We had a chance to do, is that you over there, Jody? I had a chance to work over at Park Lake and Lake Ivanhoe. Thank you all for what you have done, and I'm certain we'll get a report back from you about the great things that we accomplished. So thank you very much. National Public Lands Day is this Saturday over at Bill Frederick Park. They'll be doing a 5K to raise money. I put together a team. If you'd like to participate, please give me a call. We'd love to have you be part of that. And the 5K will take place at 7:30 on Saturday morning. So just email my office if you're interested in joining us. On Friday, September 30th, the Ivanhoe Village, along with Virginia Drive, will do the Free Mayhem Street Festival, is that right? From 6:00 to 10:00. Lot of great entertainment, lot of great food up and down Virginia, so please come and join us for that. Thank you very much for your work. Along the same lines, I have also want to introduce, announce, mention this to everybody, the College Park Jazz Fest is October 22nd. I mention this now because there's a way to support that by buying a table. You get a chance to, I guess, spend a couple hundred dollars to get a special table for you and your friends to enjoy the Jazz Fest and get a bottle of wine. So it's a great chance to be out there and be part of that community. And then finally, I'd like to share something with you, a little bit in support of Audubon Park neighborhood. I want to say a special thank you to Ed Richter and to Willie Harper and Neil Goulart De, okay, I'm sorry, I'll never get it right, for the work they have done. This is a video that we have done as a special announcement here about the city of Orlando and about a special event coming up with the Audubon Park Garden District. So with that, Ed, will you roll it? You may be asking, Commissioner Stewart, what's a zombie? A zombie is deadly serious. They look and smell dead and have a diehard addiction to brains. To remove the threat, one must sever the head or destroy the brain. Avoid all contact if possible. Do not approach a zombie under any circumstances. If friends or family are bitten by zombies, they are goners. If he or she shows signs of undead behavior, finish them off, you know, out of love. The city of Orlando urges you to take a look at our zombie emergency operations plan. Inside, you'll find out what to do in case of an invasion, how to prepare, and how to sight a zombie. I have to run, it looks like they found me. Don't forget, don't open that door. Now, I was told to say that zombies are serious business, and so in honor of making sure that we're all safe, you need to come out on October 1st to Zombie Oktoberfest to be part of that, so you can know how to spot a zombie during this Halloween season. Kat, thank you for your work. Thank you for bringing some extras along, and thank you to our communication staff for providing some extras. It was a neat way for us to have a little bit of fun and to use it as a training with some new software that we have over there, but I appreciate Ed and your work and your staff's work. And then now that we've done this, please come out and enjoy another one of our great events at our college, at our Main Street locations in Audubon Park. So thank you very much, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Billy Maynes, resist yourself. You are not going to want to write about that. I can see you already writing that.
Oh, no. I'm in trouble now, Billy.
Just resist.
I thought you weren't here, Billy. I'm so sorry.
We'll move to District Four, Commissioner Sheehan.
Thanks, Mayor. Obviously, we have a new green screen in the graphics. Commissioner Stewart, excuse me. Over the weekend, I went to see the Boone Crew over at Turkey Lake Park, and I want to thank you commissioners, because, you know, those kids are actually recovering. They had their boats taken by another not-for-profit. They lost all of their assets, and they're trying to rebuild their rowing team, and they got some new boat, some old boats, actually, that were donated, and I got to row with the team. I didn't capsize the boat, which is a good thing, but again, I just want to thank the commissioners for their support of Boone Crew, and the kids are actually rebuilding that program at Turkey Lake Park. They're doing a great job. On the agenda today, item C1 on the Main Street agreements. I'm glad to see Semeron and Church Street added. Welcome to the club, so to speak, and we look forward to great things happening from you. And I also appreciate the support from Mills 50 and Downtown South, so Holly, Joanne, to continue the great work that you're doing. On item C2, Fournier's Performance Automotive, we have a facade grant for them, so Bob, I look forward to having a really nice facade and spiffing up the garage there and making it look really nice. On item C4, the Historic Preservation Calendar and Awards, want to thank McCoy Federal Credit Union for sponsoring that at no cost to the city. On item C7, the HUD Sustainability Grant for Sun Rail Stations, I serve on the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. We're trying to get this regional grant through HUD and concentrating on transit-oriented design, so that's a great thing that will happen for us as well. Item C10 on building permits, annual building permits, minor repairs, that's a great way to streamline the system, and I appreciate Tim's hard work on that. Item D1, come out with pride, $850, deferral of the park rental for this large festival. It's going to bring about 30,000 people to downtown Orlando, so we really appreciate support for Come Out With Pride. On Item D3, I need to declare a conflict on the contract for Joseline Marie White, even though the state does not codify my relationship with her, even though we've been together seven years, I am going to abstain from voting because we do share a living expenses out of an abundance of caution. On Item I1, City Beverage and Waste Management, I'm really glad to see the donation of recycle bins to keep Orlando beautiful. I think that was a great thing to see, that we're trying to encourage people to recycle as they come to our venues. On Item I5, Mills 50 Main Street Traffic Control Cabinet Artwork, I think that's one of the most popular things our Main Street has done in Mills 50. People love the traffic control cabinet. This will actually, this will actually expand it to 12 so they can do a art cabinet calendar. So look forward to do that for fundraising for Mills 50. And that's all I have here, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to District 5, Commissioner Linum.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of announcements. I want to say earlier for the Broadway series, you know, Orlando has enjoyed Broadway here for a long time and it was a really good idea to see some return on our investment. And we never expected it, I never did. I just thought it was a great series to support, so congratulations. And the other announcements I'd like to share with you, I missed the late cleanup at Lorna Dean this past weekend because I participated in a 5K at Eagles Nest that was sponsored by Sickle Cell Anemia Board, a board that's been established since about 30 years ago. I was one of the first board members with Minnie Adams and Lillian Seids. But Gemma Phi Delta, Gemma Phi Delta Sorority Sister died this past year of complications from Sickle Cell and both Sean and Juan, my boys, have the trait and I have two granddaughters with the trait. So it was a great opportunity to show our support for Sickle Cell Disease and its research to help rid our community of this deadly and seldom very well-known disease. Also, this past week, most, I know Alex will probably know this, Lucille Nail, Shaq's mom, for years has had the, what is it, Shaq mom said, knock you out? And she and all the other basketball player mothers have come to town to help with the Shameless Foundation. I am particularly interested in it because in the United States, there is a great shortage of nurses. We're literally importing nurses from the Philippines and other places. And Lucille's mother was a nurse and what she does is really donate her profits to nursing. Bethune-Cookman College or Bethune-Cookman University now has a school of nursing and so I want to applaud her and that great effort. And just a few churches have been around for 100 years, but Bethel Baptist with Reverend Rolamari has been. As a matter of fact, Bishop Wiggins' father passed at that church at one time, but it's celebrated its centennial this past weekend. And tonight, the Honors Foundation will honor the Highwaymen over at the Museum of Art at 6 o'clock. I don't know whether we're going to get there in time because of our 5 o'clock budget hearings, but the Highwaymen were African-American artists who many, many, many years ago did great landscapes of mostly the south of Florida, the Everglades and whatnot, and had no way of distributing the art or selling it. So they put it in the back of their cars and hit the highway and ever since, they've been known as Highwaymen. So if you're interested in knowing about them or seeing any of their art, it's just fabulous art. You used to be able to get it for like $50. That $50 is now about $4,000. But because the art is rare and just a few of them are still living, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. And on agenda item, I think it's B4, I believe, with the candy shop, I want to make an announcement. Everyone asks, why do we help the businesses on Church Street? I think it is really, really important for us to know that many businesses have survived Church Street for a century. And with the growth and the change of that landscape, I believe and I trust in those businesses, I believe in them, and this is an opportunity to help them move forward. I don't think just because you know something may or may not happen, that you stop feeding it. You know you are dying of something, you don't just stop feeding people or giving them water. I'm going to work as hard as I can to make sure those businesses are successful. Andrea, I'm glad you're here. I hope we can help. And I look forward, of course, to working with Marjorie Brown and all the other businesses that are down there. We're going to work and you're going to be successful. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll move to District 6, Commissioner Rings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say congratulations to Item C1 for all of the Main Street districts, the renewals, as well as two new districts. This is a great opportunity, obviously, for the City of Orlando and sustainability for building community and commercial efforts specifically in those Main Street districts. And then also on Item C4, accepting the donation from McCoy Federal Credit Union to fund the 2012 City of Orlando Historic Preservation Board Calendar and Photo Competition. This is a great investment coming from McCoy Federal and thank you so much for your continued investment in the City of Orlando. And then Item C7, this particular East Central Florida Regional Planning County HUD Sustainable Communities Regional Planning Grant Application. This is a great opportunity for us to continue to help build community throughout the region and as it relates with our Sunrail and stations and also within Orlando and the Paramore Heritage Community, this is a great opportunity, so kudos to those that are making this particular effort and we certainly hope that you are awarded this grant. Then I'd like to say congratulations to Bishop Alan T.D. Wiggins, who was featured, I'd say featured, in the Orlando Sentinel on yesterday. They had a super article on him in regards to the Hope Church and their nonprofit organization and how they're really building and investing in the Washington Shores community through housing as well as commercial development and specifically with that Village Square Business Mall. That's a great investment in our community and thank you so very much for your continued work in those areas. And then Commissioner Stewart mentioned about the National Public Lands Day for 2011 this year, which is going to be Saturday, September 24th, at 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Bill Frederick Park at Turkey Lake. And this Turkey Lake is in District 6 and it's going to be at 3401 South Hiawassee Road. So come out and enjoy some special activities, demonstrations, including fishing, nature art projects, hiking, disc golf, boating and camping. And then we're also going to have some animal farm tours with horses, goats and much more. There will be some giveaways, so this is a fun, fantastic day for families to really bring out the kids and enjoy a great day. And specifically, as we look at our native land and our native plants that are here in the Orlando and Central Florida region, we need to really appreciate those efforts in trying to maintain this effort within our parks. Specifically, Jan Rayhill, thank you for your continued support and help in this effort. And I believe the Mayor's going to be presenting a proclamation on that particular day too. I don't know if he'll actually be there or not, but I plan to be there to enjoy this great day and invite all of our families to come out and spend some time too. And then, of course, on October the 5th, 2011, we're going to be having a ribbon cutting event. And this is in reference to the President Barack Obama Parkway Phase 1 Opening Event and it will take place at 10:30 a.m. And we're looking forward to many people to come out and we're sending a letter through the Mayor's Office to the President of the United States inviting him to come and be involved in this event with us. And thank you, Commissioner Linum, and also Commissioner Sheehan, for your great effort in working on this particular project, as well as our other Commissioners too. Thank you so much for your support. And we're looking forward to having guests that are coming out to park along Casey and Cove Drive and from Casey and Cove and President Barack Obama intersection, we will cut the ribbon and hopefully President Barack Obama would be the first vehicle to drive along that road with me following him. So thank you very much, Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, we'll move to District 1, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's been a busy week in District 1. We had our Relay for Life organizational meeting on Tuesday and the American, for those of you who don't know, that's the event that the American Cancer Society sponsors and the American Cancer Society will be sponsoring and organizing a new event to do that in the Lee Vista neighborhood. We have them in District 1, we've had them at Boone High School, we've had them down at Northlake Park. And I think it's great that we've got active and interested community volunteers in the Lee Vista area who are excited about starting a Relay for Life in Lee Vista as well. So hopefully, that'll really go a long way towards helping out the cause of the American Cancer Society. Also, last week, I had the honor of presenting a couple of awards, innovation awards, to two of Orlando's great organizations, two businesses at the Economic Development Commission Schwartz Awards Luncheon, Nemours and ER Precision Optical. Congratulations to both of them and all the great things they're doing. Also, I always like to recognize neighborhoods that are doing Neighborhood Watch, so I want to thank and congratulate and recognize the Bryn Mawr neighborhood, Chatsworth, for reorganizing their Neighborhood Watch and having a meeting last week. Also, on Saturday, Delaney Park was officially reopened. For those of you who don't remember, the park was closed after the, after a large storm came through right around the time of spring break and there was some concern it was a sinkhole. It turned out it was actually vaults buried underneath the ground that had collapsed. And I wanted to thank everybody involved for their work in getting the ball fields in the park fixed up. And also, Mayor, thank you for being there on Saturday morning. It was a nice event and thank you to all that were involved in that. I also want to thank the Orlando Police Department for their good work in working on and trying to solve some of the crimes that occurred in the Delaney Park area and some of the surrounding areas fairly recently. And also, also announce a meeting that will be held tonight to update the residents of the area and also give residents of the area a chance to get more information about what's happening and also things they can do to make themselves, their homes and their neighborhood more secure. On the agenda today, I'd like to just mention four items. First of all, I think everybody's mentioned Item C1, which is the renewal of the Main Street Agreements for existing Main Streets, including the one that borders my district, which is Downtown South. And then also, welcome to the new ones, Semeron Boulevard and Church Street. Congratulations on that. I think everybody's expecting great things. Also, I want to recognize the recycling item. Item I1, that's something that a lot of people ask about, is opportunities to recycle when they're out in the community. And then two Public Works Projects, Items I2 and I3, which will authorize improvements to continue to go forward on Semeron Boulevard and Church Street. So I want to thank Rick Howard and all the Public Works folks for their good work on that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, on the motion to, and I'll take note that Commissioner Diamond had also, as Commissioner Sheehan had, had mentioned an item that he wanted to abstain on based on a potential conflict related to the Methodist Church. With that, let's see, Commissioner Ortiz had moved the consent agenda seconded by Commissioner Stewart, all in favor. The motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That will bring us to the CRA, so we will recess the City Council Meeting. We will convene the CRA meeting without objection. Thomas, we have one item.
We do. Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon to you and the members, rest of the members of the CRA.
Why don't you give them just a minute to clear out?
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon. Item number two on the new business for today's agenda is approving the MiBA funding agreement and security agreement between the CRA and Oopsie Scoopsey. As usual, I'd like to give a little background information and some context before we get into the particulars of this particular, of the specifics, I should say, of this particular application. MiBA is just over five years old, having been approved in August of 2006. And of course, the guidelines were updated last fall and October. The intent of MiBA, of course, is to focus on small business retention and creation only in the Paramore area. And finally, MiBA provides monetary benefits of up to $40,000 for various uses, including purchase of capital equipment, marketing and/or startup expenses. The Advisory Board, there's a MiBA Advisory Board, as you know, and that Board comprehensively and thoroughly reviews each proposal and application, including all the things you see there, reviewing the history of the business, the business plan, any pertinent lease agreements and other documents. And of course, as of the updated guidelines, proof of minimum investment of 10% as well as background checks. The MiBA Advisory Board then recommends or makes a recommendation to the CRA Advisory Board, which makes a recommendation to the CRA. As to date, there have been 12 MiBA loans funded. Of those 12, three of them have defaulted, the other nine are in good standing. The funding total for all 12, as you can see there, exceeds $406,000 out of budgeted totals of $550,000 for that time period. Today's application is on Oopsie Scoopsey, which is a self-serve frozen yogurt business that, which features multiple flavors and toppings. And you're probably familiar with Oopsie Scoopsey, they're directly across the street from Amway Center's main entrance at 397 West Church Street. The owner is L3, which is an LLC. The operators are Maurice Campbell and Corey Lamb. You see the location there and the exterior and interior shot of the business. Oopsie Scoopsey's markets, markets to, its market demographic, I should say, includes middle and upper income and those who are health-conscious with their diet as well as downtown visitors and residents. Their promotional events have included a grand opening event and they have an ongoing customer loyalty program. They count amongst their advantages over competition, obviously their location across from Amway Center, as well as quality of product and service. You can see here the projected first three years of projected sales, revenues and profits for the business. And startup costs were listed in the application as exceeding $80,000 for the build-out and FFNE or furniture fixtures and equipment, as well as initial staffing. So an $80,000 investment has been made in that business to date already by the owners. And of course, you provided with information regarding the Business Consultants Report, which is now a part of your package, as well as background checks of a criminal and financial nature. That information has been provided to you in detail. The initial funding request by the applicant was for the full $40,000 for marketing and capital equipment, as you can see here, $6,600 in a direct mail campaign, almost $21,000 in advertising with Oak Arts. And it should be noted that Oak Arts is a business that's also owned by the same owners that own Oopsie Scoopsey. There was $7,200 provided for Bright House Television and $3,250 for social media, a social media campaign, as well as $4,895 for capital equipment. The MiBA Advisory Board, upon its analysis of the application and review of the Business Consultant Report, recommended that the amount be awarded at $14,895, which breaks down into $10,000 for marketing, which they felt was much more, was much more consistent with the size of the business and the amount of revenue being derived from that business, as well as the original $4,895, which have been asked, requested for capital equipment, bringing a total of the recommendation of $14,895. The conditions for funding are the usual, which is to maintain this current location or a location within the target area for three years, being open five days a week minimum, or 40 hours a week minimum, maintaining transparent storefronts and downtown logos, as well as highly visible signage, which would comply with all as well as highly visible signage, which would comply with all pertinent regulations of DRC and the city, and seeking technical assistance from an EDO organization of its choice that we will approve. Further conditions are to submit a marketing plan within three months of the effective date of the agreement. And as per the updated guidelines, a design action plan, a DAP, if you will, prior to any reimbursement of MiBA funds. A DAP is now required and lays out, as it says here, a roadmap for successful participation in the MiBA program, basically how the money is going to be used to address those issues that the Business Consultants Report would have pointed out and to successfully propel the business into the future. Other conditions include, in this case, Oopsie Scoopsey is to execute a new lease, or a lease amendment, I should say, with the City's Real Estate Division to accommodate their current sales of alcohol, subject to approval by City Council, and a grantee shell obtained requisite approval from DRC and building permits for all outstanding, any and all outstanding issues, including but not limited to signage, sidewalk cafe and stanchions prior to reimbursement of MiBA funds. Finally, on this slide, a grantee must execute a security agreement for the capital equipment expenditures and a continuing guarantee along with the MiBA funding agreement. With all of this in mind and with the recommendations of both the MiBA advisory board and the CRA advisory board, the recommendation is the staff is requesting, not a recommendation today, but obviously, but an approval from the CRA for the MiBA funding agreement between the CRA and L3 LLC, an authorization for the chairman of the CRA and the executive director of the CRA to execute the agreement, subject to the review and approval of the City Attorney's Office and approval of expenditures from the Downtown Orlando Community Redevelopment Area Trust Fund in the amount of up to $14,895 in MiBA funding for L3 LLC doing business as Oopsie Scoopsey.
I move approval.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Ings. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Further business? I'm sorry, was there a note? Was it a note? No. Six, one. Thomas, is there further business to come before the council, or before the CRA today?
There is none.
Okay. Then we will be adjourned and we will, let's convene the OPEB Board of Trustees meeting. And we have one agenda item, which is acceptance of a routine annual evaluation report from the City's actuary. The report sets forth the City's annual required contribution for the OPEB trust fund for retiree healthcare benefits according to the current governmental accounting standards. It's our motion to accept.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Discussion, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. No further business to come before the OPEB Board of Trustees. So, we will adjourn the OPEB meeting. We will reconvene the city council meeting. And that brings us to new business hearings. And this is a public hearing regarding a feasibility study and purchase option agreement for certain city property. Notice of the hearing appeared in the Orlando Sentinel on September 13, 2011. An approval of the agreement will require a majority vote of all members of the city council. If after the feasibility study period, the city proposes to sell the property, then the purchase contract will come back before the council for a separate charter hearing. Title to the property is held in the name of the City of Orlando and is located at 150 South Huey Avenue, which is the Church Street Garage, 35 South Division Avenue, OPD Radio Tower Building, 400 West Central Boulevard, the OPD Vehicle Service Center, and consists of approximately 4.9 acres. The proposed option purchaser is SED Development LLC. And we will conduct a public hearing, but before we do that, I want to give a few introductory remarks and then I'll have Mayan explain the nature of the feasibility study. And I'm going to ask Alex to come up and talk about SEC Development and their participation. Over the last eight years or so, one of the top priorities for this council and for me have been to revitalize the downtown and Paramore. And we have not done this in a haphazard way. We have done it with a lot of forethought and a lot of study. We did three separate planning exercises on how to redevelop the downtown and, in this case, more specifically, the Paramore area. In 2003, '04, we had the Downtown Strategic Transition Team Report. One of the fundamentals out of that report was to keep the Orlando Magic in Orlando and then laid out a vision for a new Performing Arts Center, as well as a new Amway Center. That was followed up with a more specific Paramore Task Force Action Plan. And the Paramore Task Force was made up of, I think, about 25 citizens. Is Brian still here? I saw Brian Butler out there before, was the chair of that.
He just left.
He just left, just before, I was going to call his name out, was the chair of that group. And that then led to the Community Venues Master Plan that was done by Gladys Jackson and the designing of the Amway Center. And collectively, we have created the vision of having a sports and entertainment district along Church Street, along the three venues that we have, with the Citrus Bowl, the Amway Center being directly in the center of the district, and then the Performing Arts Center being just a block off of the district. And that has provided some strategic direction on how we have made public investment to act as a catalyst for private investment. We want the investment that we made in the Amway Center to leverage private capital. And we've always envisioned that the property across the street from the Amway Center would be one of the first areas that would be likely for redevelopment. And in fact, as we designed the Amway Center with the glass in the front and the interaction with Church Street, when we first did the very first charrette, talking about what should the building speak to and what should it look like, there was discussion about having public space across the way so that we could have large gatherings and it would be a place that all of Orlando could come and celebrate and have musical events and all types of things. So, off and on, we have talked with the Magic about what that could look like over there. And probably nine months, a year ago, Alex mentioned to me that they were considering relocating their headquarters. Well, their lease was coming up and they had to make a decision on whether to re-up in Maitland or consider some possibility of relocating their headquarters downtown. And more specifically, in the last several weeks, the Magic came and said that they have done pretty well in some of their other business ventures and have an opportunity to invest $100 million somewhere. And that somewhere could be here in Paramore, that we want to talk with them about doing that. And that's stepping up and putting your money where your mouth is, as far as I'm concerned, where we have benefited from having the Amway Center, but have not had anybody else that has had actually the financial ability to help us make some of that private development happen. So, they were willing to bring their corporate headquarters to downtown and create a larger sports and entertainment complex. So, that's going to mean jobs, it's going to mean there's $100 million there. But there would be, in my mind, some question, why do we give the Magic this exclusive right? So, what we decided was the best approach was rather than sell the property outright to the Magic, was to have them conduct a feasibility study, give them up to a year to refine a plan that they would then bring back to the council that would require a separate vote. If we liked the plan, we could move forward to the plan and sell the property at fair market value, which would be done through an appraisal process that is set out in the feasibility plan. There's a number of items that we need to deal with. The OPD police station is there. How do we recreate, right, chief? I see you shaking your head. How do we make sure that they are able to continue on, upped in terms of their business operations? There is a parking garage, a public parking garage, that we would need to replace, all of that parking. How and when do we do that? We're certainly very cognizant of the 11 merchants that have their businesses and their livelihood tied up in that section. And we certainly have legal obligations to them, but I think, in my mind, we also have moral obligations to them. So, we want to make sure that we are fair to them and make accommodation for them. And there's many, many other loose details, but conceptually, it would be $100 million somewhere in that neighborhood investment by a group related to the Magic, feasibility or a year-long to take a look at that and work out the deals, relocation of a corporate headquarters, so bringing new jobs downtown and starting to recognize that vision for we've had for the Church Street corridor. So, what I would like to do at this point is to have Mayan explain the agenda item. Then I'll have Alex give a presentation from their perspective and then we'll open it up for public testimony. Mayan?
Thank you, Mayor. Usually, I'm right down there, but I had a little more to say and I didn't want all of us to get cricks in our neck as you had to lean down that direction. I wanted to talk to you today, and the mayor suggested it, because there is something clearly a little bit unusual about our agenda item. It's not every day that private development walks in your door and says, "We really want to look very seriously at the possibility of investing $100 million into your downtown." And another thing that I think is unusual is you don't usually see this close nexus in time between public investment, which we've done a lot of, and private development like this. This often takes decades for cities to see, or even the federal government to see, the connection between public investment and private investment. But mostly, I wanted to explain to you from our standpoint, from the City Attorney's Office standpoint, what this agreement is, because there may have been some confusion about what it isn't. And it seems to me the best way to approach that is to describe for you what our view is that this agreement obligates you to do as a city commission, if in fact, you approve it. If you approve it, you're going to have three obligations. Number one, don't sell this property to anybody else during the time the Magic has the option to pursue the possibility of this project. That's pretty light duty, guys, because you didn't even have the property on the market. But you have to agree to not sell it to anybody else. So, they will have an exclusive option during this time period, and you know it's set forth in the agreement. It's up to a year or whenever they trigger the option, or at the conclusion of the year, we're done, we keep 50 grand, they walk away. The second obligation you have is to enable or authorize your staff, all the people who work on deals like this, but not deals this big, to engage in cooperating on the due diligence, talking to surveyors, making title information available, all the things, by the way, that's also not very tough duty, because your staff does that all the time. Again, not on deals this big, not on deals this mission-driven, but your staff is set up to engage in cooperative assistance to the Magic team, for them to look at all the details that are set forth in this agreement, in those general bullet points, as the mayor said, OPD, traffic, you know, there's just a lot of things that would have to be done with a project this comprehensive. The third thing is that if and when SED, that's the title, Mayor, I know you saw the Tennessee game this weekend, so you renamed the deal the SEC deal. I like it. You would have an obligation, if the Magic comes forward with a detailed proposal that addresses all these issues, you have an obligation to give them a fair hearing in good faith and make your decision then, up or down, yes or no. Now, some people have said, "What if somebody else wants to do a deal like this?" I presume they'll come right up here to this podium and tell you all about that. Anybody else, this does not foreclose anybody else from working on any deal. We don't have a way to foreclose anybody from working on a deal. But what this agreement does not do is sell the property. The mayor said to you, and the first thing that direction he gave to us a couple of weeks ago, when the Magic came to us with this concept, this idea, was, "I want it to be transparent, I want it to be open, I want it to be clear, I want the world to know and everybody to have an opportunity to understand it." And so, we've conducted this exercise like a charter review hearing. In other words, we put it in the paper, we're going to have, we have this notice process, but we're not entering into an agreement to sell the property because, for example, we don't know what the purchase price would be. We don't know what's going to happen with OPD. We don't know what encroachments might be needed, what easements. We don't know what the traffic flow will be. We don't know what we're going to do with the parking garages. We don't know how we're going to accommodate the tenant obligations that we have, both moral and legal. We don't know all of those things, so it can't be the kind of contract that you can approve today. And so, just to reiterate, the option that this group will have will be to, for you not sell the property to anybody during the time period, number one. Number two, cooperate with due diligence. And number three, give them a fair, good-faith hearing on the details if and when they come to you and to vote it up at that time, yes or no. Final note, as all of you know, government can't, and this is of course for very good reasons, you can't agree today what you'll do in the future, except under very limited circumstances. Commissioner Linum is nodding, you know about that. You all know about that. So, even if you wanted to make a binding deal to sell this property right this minute, we wouldn't have sufficient information to draft that up in a way that made sense, that answered your questions. And we couldn't agree today what your decision will be based on information you'll receive in the future. So, I hope that clarifies any confusion there might have had. I guess I'll just conclude by saying, these are the kind of problems I hope we have a lot more of. It's a very exciting problem for us to be presented with in the legal department, I can tell you that. Mayor, anything else?
No, Mayan. I think that covers it unless somebody has a question.
Any questions?
Commissioner Sheehan.
First, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Louie Damiani, who's at the back of the room. He came. Yes. Thank you for coming, Commissioner. And, Mayan, you said that basically this is a potential $100 million deal. Have we had any other parties of interest who've come to us with other $100 million deals, potentially?
That would be a no.
Okay. Well, I just want to clarify that and put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayan.
Anything else, Mayor?
I want to mention two things before I have Alex come up. The other part of what the Magic are doing, they're putting up some, a deposit, I guess, in essence, of $50,000 and then another $50,000 to be applied towards the purchase price. But this feasibility analysis, we would not have the ability to do ourselves unless we wanted to come up with $2 or $3 million and pay for it. So, we get the work product at the end of the day, whether they move forward with it or not. So, it's a $2 or $3 million investment in that fashion in our direction and planning. One other aspect that I forgot to mention is I have asked that they coordinate with a creative village team as well to explore ways that each project could potentially enhance the other and maybe a more, a north-south connector of some sort. So, that's something that the city would have wanted to do anyways in the future. So, we're getting that piece of it paid for by a private entity. I'm going to give Alex a little more formal introduction, just so that people who are unknowledgeable know a little bit more about what the Magic are doing. And they have really been a strong community partner, and especially in Paramore. Wouldn't you agree with that, Commissioner Linum, in terms of the investment that they have made in our various community centers in Paramore with the After School All-Stars, the Paramore Kids Zone, the High Tech Tutoring Center, the Jackson Center? So, true community champions in that regard, off the court, as well as on the court. So, with that, I actually would be hard-pressed to think of a better development partner than having somebody that is directly across the street and is concerned about what type of quality development occurs north of Church Street. So, Alex, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council. It's good to be before you again, especially to talk about an exciting opportunity, certainly not a plan yet, but an opportunity for us to invest in our downtown and to do something that every city in America at this point in time is trying to do, and that's to create jobs. As you know, when we began the process of developing the Community Venue Plan, along with several people from the city, as well as several of you on this council, we traveled around America to look at best practices, not just in community venues, not just in arena facilities, but also the community redevelopment that, from my perspective, these arenas had brought to the downtown areas in which they were placed. And we visited places like Charlotte and Columbus and Nashville and Kansas City, and we saw that there were significant sports and entertainment developments that sprouted up around these facilities within the decade after they were built. Unfortunately, what we did not know at that time was that we'd Unfortunately, what we did not know at that time was that we'd be hitting the toughest economic time of our generation. And although we all would have expected by this time someone else to have come forward and to start talking about sports and entertainment development tied to the Amway Center, I think the economy has definitely put a, a pause into that process here. You may also be aware that although we are very closely seen as, as tied to the city of Orlando in its image, because we are the Orlando Magic, our corporate headquarters are not located downtown Orlando. We're located about 14 miles north of downtown. But what you may not know is that in our residence at the R D V Sportsplex, our current lease comes up for expiration during the year 2014. And so as we look at this moment in time, we have a couple of variables that bring us to today that present an opportunity. First of all, the mayor had noted an opportunity from an investment standpoint, not just from the DeVos family, but other development partners that we intend to partner with on this proposed development. Investment opportunities that have been favorable. I would also note that one of those is not the Orlando Magic, for the record, in that despite our great success on the court this past year, it was not a money-making investment for our ownership. We speak of other investments that have done well. We talk about investing and the opportunity to invest. But having said that, we also have the point in time of this expiration of our lease to do a long-term plan as to where we would recognize our corporate headquarters into the future. With the opening, and just a little perspective on that for you, so, because I think many or some may not be aware of how we are office as an organization. With the opening of the Amway Center, we relocated our basketball operations department and our team to the Amway Center per our agreement with the city. I think that was a desire of this council to bring the core of our business, our basketball team, into the downtown and expose them to our citizens, and particularly, particular our youth in downtown. And we also moved a small portion of our staff to fulfill the responsibilities of the Magic under the use agreement at the Amway Center. We operate some of the day-to-day operations on behalf of the city on a 365-day-a-year basis, but all told, that only equals about 15% of our Magic staff that have moved downtown into the Amway Center. The other 85% remain up at, at the R D V Sportsplex north of downtown. What we've learned from our first year of operation in the Amway Center is that having our staff split within 14 miles of each other is certainly not efficient, particularly for myself, you know, who travels quite a bit between the two offices, offices to oversee both portions of our staff, including many of our other staff members who have to make that trek on I-4, at many times unpleasurable to get between the two offices. Another point in context is just to remind you of our statement to the governor during our final approval of Sun Rail, that we would look into and participate in transit-oriented development should Sun Rail come to fruition. And certainly with the approval of Sun Rail, this gives us the opportunity to do so. So it's, it's exciting for us and our development partners to contemplate studying this opportunity of uses that could be, you know, be mutually beneficial, not just to us, but to our downtown. Certainly, the opportunity to bring a 365-day-a-year type of clientele, you know, to this West Church Street area, as opposed to only on the days of events in the building, is something that we should look into, at the very least. We have heard from many of our merchants along Church Street that the addition of the Amway Center has improved their business. We heard from a lot of them to the effect that on certain event days, they were seeing record number, numbers in terms of their business because of the Amway Center. But that's not a 365-day-a-year situation at this point in time. This type of development certainly can make that a 365-day-a-year opportunity for all of our merchants along Church Street. The mayor mentioned this is a potential investment of upwards of $100 million that we believe will bring in excess of over 300 new permanent jobs, in excess of the relocation of the Magic corporate headquarters, with, again, a focus on expanding the volume of patrons to Church Street to 365 days a year. Our selection of the property to option and study for the location was clear in two parts. One, it has been identified as the next most important parcel to develop in the master venues plan around the Amway Center. And two, for us, the Orlando Magic provides us with adjacencies and proximity to our facilities in the Amway Center. However, while it may be the right location, it also, as the mayor alluded to, creates several challenges. We have the long-term parking needs that must be addressed, replicated, and exceeded as it relates to the current parking garage there on Church Street. We have the working relationship with OPD and its fleet that must be addressed and an alternative must be arrived at. And then, just as important, we have our merchants in the street level of that garage, who this council knows the Orlando Magic has worked very closely with over the course of the past three to five years in supporting them, in subsidizing certain rent payments, and helping to provide business plans for their future. And, you know, as we've said publicly, you know, prior to this hearing, we have no intention of turning our backs on those merchants, and we certainly look forward to working with them during this feasibility study to determine how they will integrate into a potential development. So these types of major investments are not just a point in time, an event, but a careful process that we need to engage in. Real economic investment, especially in today's environment, is not driven by speculation but planning and working together to solve problems and find ways to create value for both the public and private sector. This simply takes time and an early commitment of resources by ourselves to address these challenges. These mutual objectives, hopefully, will shape itself over the course of the year into a new private investment that benefits not just the private investors, but the city in the form of additional tax rolls, additional increment that is currently not on the books for that specific piece of property in downtown. We, as a development entity, again, primarily driven by Orlando Magic investors, but other investors as well, plan to invest both time, and as the mayor said, several million dollars in this feasibility study. And if the city so desires to grant the option on the land, we would come before you a year from this time, if not before, with the plan, with an independently negotiated purchase price that's in the best interest of the city, and ultimately with what the, the plan would be for all of the above-mentioned factors, being OPD, the merchants, parking, and then some. So Mayor, and members of city council, we request your support and approval of this proposed feasibility and purchase option that, as the city attorney has pointed out, does not place any burden on the city other than to allow us to conduct this feasibility study for the next year without the sale of the land, and to come back before city council with an appropriate plan for your approval or disapproval within the next year. And I can give you my assurance that we're going to focus on making this just as great an opportunity for downtown Orlando as the Amway Center has done under our development watch during the past three or four years. Mayor, thank you. Counsel, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. I think you have a couple of questions. Commissioner Lyman, then Commissioner Diamond.
Well, mine is really not a question, because Alex and I've had an extensive conversation about this, I think, a couple of times. But I thought now, before the waters get muddered, I wanted to make a couple of comments, and maybe some we can get answered while you're standing there, Alex. And we, he alluded to our traveling quite a bit back, and I know in 1999, I visited L.A. with the National Legal Cities. And Alex brought to my attention the other day, if you've ever gone to L.A. with the Staples facility. I remember then, when they had entered into an agreement to bring economic impact and stimulus to the community around Staples Center. I walked from the Staples Center over to the Gormet District, and have a, and I can vividly remember the new area now, what it looks like since the Staples Center, and since all the construction and the new opportunities there. I want to say to those vendors who are still here, the merchants, and we had our meeting last Tuesday, that they've already heard from me, actually, and I'd like for people to give us a chance to work with this organization. It's kind of hard when everybody's whispering in your ear, you don't know who to believe, and I have asked them to keep their eyes and ears open to me. I am their elected representative, and I will be honest and forthright with them. Plus, you will be engaged in any and everything that we do, as you have been through the years. Now, there've been some other questions about this, and one of the things I wanted to share with you, I remember another organization that was in Maitland, who's, what do you call that, is up?
Headquarters.
Yeah, your headquarters. I mean, your, your tenant associate, your, your agreement is up. Your, what is it called?
Lease.
Your lease will be up in 2014.
Right.
Well, Hugh Supply was in Maitland, and their lease was up. And I had known David long before I moved to Orlando, known him over 37 years, and Mayor Hood and I both went to David and said, "Hey, we've got a piece of land for you." And of course, we've got City View. But it was during that time, Alex, and in 2000, 1999 and 2000, that Orlando Police Department plans were made to move it, and the city purchased properties over on Anderson Street. So when we were talking about the, the, the parking garage, the Orlando Police Department, I know we've got the cellular tower there, none of this is new. As a matter of fact, it was the 2000 Downtown Summit where we decided that the highest and best use was to be put along Huey, because your taller buildings could go there, and it would begin to slide down, kind of, you know, go down toward the singer-family homes, where we agreed at that time to not eliminate residential living. So none of this is new to me, and I tell you, I have read this agreement, this small agenda item, critically, two or three times, and I think the only question someone asked me about was the Orlando Police Department. We mentioned it may have, may not have been included, but I would like to say and announce that everybody would be made whole, and I think you just reiterated that as we go along. And I don't think all the answers need to come forward right now. I have critically read this, I believe this is just what it says. I'd rather do business with somebody I know, and I mention this to the vendors, than somebody from Canada. I don't mean, I don't mean Canada just because it's Canada. It could be Switzerland, but it's easier to touch someone and know someone you have already gotten a relationship with. I have discussed this in a post-it meeting with another commissioner, and I called Byron to ask that it really be clear that this is easily understandable, and it doesn't bind us to anything that we didn't want to do. I've read it, I have not found any encombrances beyond my comprehension, but I wanted to say that my understanding of the highest and best use for the space didn't start eight years ago. It started in 1998, and actually with our Downtown Summit of 2000. And I don't know who was here in 2000, but I was. And so it's not a, a, a surprise. Plus, it's not a surprise to the vendors and the merchants. Each one, as they've moved in, I have personally, when I've had an opportunity to interact with them. Now, I can't say anything to someone I didn't talk to before they moved in, but as they moved in, to talk about a vision for that space that does predate all of their leases, that went back to my knowledge in 2000. I arrived on the scene in 1998, but for about three or four years before then, I served on the downtown, the city's municipal planning board, so had, you know, great knowledge about where we were going. As a matter of fact, that was then when we started dealing with the Hope Church and getting you all involved in city things, Bishop. So thank you for that. I just basically want to go over those few points to point out that we have an obligation to have a highest and best use. I'm never going to abandon the merchants. I'm going to see that you're engaged, see that you are, whatever your needs are, that we try and meet. And we have had a great partner. Because it was about three years, we didn't have any business down there, and you were able to hold on until the event center opened. And I feel right now that's, that we owe more to you than to anyone else. But I see one of the old-time activists here, and I don't know whether this is what he's here for, Mr. Q, but if it is, talk to Alex. I'll come by your house. I walk past it like twice a week. I don't even see you. I pass there so early. But I think people just want to know and have clarity on what is happening. And I'm trying to not only provide clarity, but a sense of history, because a lot of people really don't know the history of a lot of communities. And I have a great memory and a great love for history, and making sure the history is accurate. So I will offer a motion when the time comes, but right now, I know there's some other questions, and I think all questions ought to be settled. Plus, we've got to look toward the town center. That's also a part of that study we had earlier. I know I saw Lori earlier. I don't know where she is, but then...
She's right there.
Where?
To your right.
Oh, okay. Well, without my glasses, I couldn't see that far back anyway. But we've also got coming down the pike somewhere a town center that we, that was a part of the plan. I don't know when that is going to happen, but it's, it is coming, and we've got great opportunities. No one talks about it, but there is a BBIF project sitting there on, but because of the economy, everything has come to a stalemate. It's just been a horrific impact on the community. So in the light of jobs and job opportunities, without injuring anyone, injuring anyone, I will move forward with this, when, as I said, with the time comes, I will offer a motion to accept.
And Commissioner, if I may, Mayor, I did neglect to point out, and if we could pull the slide up on the commissioner's monitors and on the monitors here as well, this is the actual feasibility study plan, for those that may have any question about it. What you will see on this is that the Orlando Police Department headquarters is not included in this initial feasibility plan here. What is included that impacts OPD is their fleet parking and management of the fleet, as well as their communications tower, which ultimately would need to be relocated if this were to be the piece of land that were purchased. But again, all of that will be studied during the course of this feasibility.
Thank you, Alex. Okay, Commissioner Diamond.
Thank you. I, I'm going to make some comments as well, and I think this is very interesting. I think there are some, there are certainly some, some benefits here that we need to talk about, but frankly, I just think we need to know a little bit more about this. You know, and the first thing I, I'm going to react to is the comment that, well, nobody else came forward, and nobody else knew the property was for sale. You know, typically, when you try to sell property, you might have a request for proposals, RFP, you might, you might have advertising, you might even put a sign on the side of a building. And I'm, I'm very troubled by the fact that nobody else knew about this, and I think whether it's a homeowner, or a commercial property owner, or even someone like the Orlando Utilities Commission, which just went through a process, they advertised it. Other people had a chance to be involved. And just because other people might involve, be involved, doesn't mean you can't still pursue a good plan. But I'm very troubled by the fact that we're not being given any kind of alternatives as far as buyers or developers. We're not being given any kind of alternatives as far as whether we want to sell, and right now, selling is probably the low point of the real estate market. We're not being given option, any sort of alternatives as far as potentially ground leasing this property, or doing something that might be better for the taxpayers. And as far as the comments that, well, this is just a feasibility study, and you come back in a year, and maybe this, maybe you say yes, maybe you say no, I, I think it's going to be difficult to say no. I think once you go through this option process where you have a contract that's say- I think once you go through this option process where you have a contract that says you're giving an option, and you've got very detailed procedures as far as how you're gonna figure out the price, which unfortunately, we don't know, and we don't know, we're being asked to do that without even knowing the price, but after you come back with the price, I think it's gonna be difficult to say, no, we're not interested in doing this. I think this is really just saying yes, and whether yes is the right answer or not, I just don't know today. I don't think this process has been open, I don't think it's been transparent, and I'm not gonna support it.
All right, that sounded more like debate, was that a question or a comment for Alex?
Well, no, and I said it was a comment, Mayor.
Okay. We're still gonna have public hearing and testimony. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna, first of all, thank you, Mr. Martin, because I'm glad that we're doing things the way we're doing it. We're starting with a feasibility study, which doesn't mean anything but that we're gonna study the possibilities of creating this new complex in that area. I'm looking at a few of the pluses here, and I think we have gone back and forth looking at pluses and minuses, but the fact that the Magic have contributed so much to our community, that you guys have been partners, positive partners, you have never turned your back to us, those are items, those are things that we look on a partner and are so far, so hard to find in this day and age, you know, somebody who we can really rely on. So, as Commissioner Lyman said before, what a great opportunity for a long, lifelong partner, as you guys have been. The economic impact that this is creating to our community, and the possibilities, I really, I'm embracing that. And the fact that you keep helping our downtown economy, and for that matter, the economy of the whole city of Orlando, by being who you guys are and what you bring to the economy, and what you bring to the city as a whole, besides the pride and everything else, which we're very excited about. An excess of 300 jobs, dear Lord, what a great opportunity. So, let me reiterate that you guys have never turned your back to us, that as you said, that this is a feasibility study, there's no binding contract, am I correct? There's no, let's see, no binding contract. You are paying for the study, for the whole study, so we don't have to take anything out of pocket from the city. When the time comes, we can deny this contract, and when the time comes, maybe other opportunities might rise, maybe some other company may come and, and make a better offer, so then it become a competitive process. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, that being said, that being said, I think we need to move forward, because these are tough times, and we need to create, as a very smart man said, government creates opportunity, and this is the way we create opportunity, by finding good partners that can bring a lot to the table, and you guys have been doing it for a long time, and I know you guys will continue doing it. So, I encourage the other commissioners to move forward with this, and thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you for your words.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you. Mayor, I'm gonna hold some of the comments in terms of debate, but I do have some questions for Alex, and I guess probably the concern I have, and I, and I do understand Commissioner Diamond's concern, is that what, what has been publicized in the media isn't quite what all of us would understand this agreement tells us. I guess the assumption is that, and I'll be critical of the media just for a moment, when you add the words "may" and "should" and "could," what gets interpreted is it's a done deal, and we're already have done this, and it's just, you know, all, it's all over but the shouting. I appreciate what Commissioner Ortiz has done, so I want to make sure, for the sake of the media that are listening, the, our obligation is to not negotiate with anybody else, or, I'm sorry, that's not true, our obligation is not to sell this property to anybody else in the course of the next year while you're doing your feasibility study.
Correct.
But the feasibility study is being paid for by Orlando Magic.
Correct, well, the development arm, yes.
I mean, development, I'm sorry, SED Development, I think, which is the name of the partner that you guys have actually up in...
It's the partnership that we've developed for this specific development, yes.
That, that, in exchange for that, you're willing to put down $50,000 to us as a non-refundable deposit to accomplish that task.
Correct.
And that, that when this comes back to us in the future, understanding that Commissioner Diamond's comment, that a lot of work will go into it, and we'll have to take that into account. But there's really, it's not an obligation for us to say yes or no, this is a gamble that you guys would like to make, and in exchange, you're asking us not to sell it out from underneath you in this, in the timeframe.
Correct.
And, and then what may be there is an office building, what may be there is a complete entertainment complex, what may be there is whatever you feel is feasible to accomplish that, with your ultimate goal right now, bringing 300 workers back to downtown Orlando and having access to all the amenities that we have.
The only known today, Commissioner, is that we intend to move our corporate headquarters there into what would probably be characterized as a mid-rise office tower. Beyond that, that's what the next year is going to tell us, what the market will bear in terms of other elements of that potential development.
And that's really kind of what I'm getting to, is that, that you, your desire to move downtown and go into a building, you only have a couple of choices. Go into an existing building and just bring your offices down here, in which case you're gonna be, an existing building, you're gonna be eight, 10, 12 blocks away, which now means you gotta get in a car and go some over there anyway, as opposed to being across the street. So, the idea of bringing your building, your people across the street from where you are is really is the impetus for moving this forward.
14 blocks may as well be those 14 miles.
Exactly, exactly. Anyway, I want to make sure that we're clear from that standpoint, because sometimes the media is, is running this forward. I appreciate so much that the Mayor and Commissioner Lyman going and talking to the vendors, to our tenants over there, because I think they need to be, have their minds put at ease, that even if we were to make a decision, we're two or three down, two or three years down the road before something's actually going to happen. But, but we, we're moving down this track, there's one or two magic seasons that are gonna occur before the time you start turning a shovel, if we agree with that.
And by the way, as it relates to those merchants, you know, one of our goals during the feasibility will be, you know, to study how we could have little to no impact on them during, you know, any initial construction, so that they can continue to operate. But again, this all, you know, will need to take place in terms of this year-long feasibility study.
I appreciate, I'll hold some of my comments later on, but that's, we'll make sure that that's information is clear from our standpoint.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ings?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Alex, thank you for your presentation and being here today, but specifically, I have one question, and that was, who is SED?
SED is an entity affiliated with the Magic, whose majority ownership would be characterized as Magic owners, but also does and intends, intends to include other investors.
Okay. And Ed, if we could put that little map back on there again. Along the Church Street side there, you see the little circles there, which obviously represents the merchants that are there. And I've heard some of your statements concerning them, but we all know that there is a real special need, you know, as it relates with the merchants and how this actually evolves with them. And the other aspect is you've had some of those merchants to invest money into the building and have build-outs. Oopsie Scoopsey, I think, is around about $80,000, and Drafts Lounge has put in several thousands of dollars.
Seven hundred. Not several thousand, hundreds.
Seven hundreds?
Several hundreds.
Several hundreds.
A lot of thousands.
Yeah, a lot.
A lot, yeah, a lot.
Okay, they've put a lot of money into this project, too, to their, their build-out and all of that, and, and specifically with some of the other merchants, they've changed their little venues to kind of fit in with the, the arena that's across the street, and when the street opens up for the plaza effect with all of the visitors in and around, the shops are being visited by those people, and we understand that those things are occurring. We also understand, too, that these vendors have been there even when there was no building, even when the streets were closed, and on-street parking was not available, and so it was just really hard and tight for them, and I know that others like yourself, as well as the city and the CRA, has invested too in helping, you know, with their rents through, through that effort, but they've kind of been there. And the last statement that you made concerning those merchants was the possibility of trying to build even around them as they are still there and how they kind of fit in. But, you know, the one thing is about any business is location, 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 and they're in the prime location, and, you know, I know from a feasibility perspective and study, it's, it's gonna be difficult to try to maintain that kind of thing, I know that it will be, but in the meantime, it does still give them some sense of hope that you aren't gonna forget about them, you aren't gonna give up on them, and you're gonna even try to work around them, even if you, even if the study says this is what it should be, and, and you're still gonna go forward with that through construction, et cetera. I was also looking at Bryan Avenue there, the street, because that's put in there too, so are we giving up Bryan Avenue as part of this? Because that's the street that the police department do utilize to get in and out of its building through Central Boulevard there.
Nothing's being assumed, to answer your question directly, Commissioner, nothing's being, nothing is being assumed at this stage. All we're saying by this map is that this is the area of study, and ultimately, every one of those elements, as, you know, as we said earlier, discussions with OPD and, you know, how they best utilize their fleet site will be part of the feasibility and discussions. I mean, they will have, they will be actively involved in those discussions as we determine how this ultimately, all the pieces of the puzzle are put together.
And Commissioner, we might as well be totally upfront about that, too. This is probably a Phase One, and redeveloping where the actual police station is is gonna be some future stage. As Commissioner Lyman said, when Mayor Hood was here, there was actually an announcement of a new police station, and about half of the property on the block it was supposed to be on, I think we own at this point, so it's been at least a decade that there has been contemplation of moving the police sta, or moving the location of the OPD headquarters somewhere else.
Yeah, that's another argument, too, 'cause, you know, I, I come from that police station, and I, I was there when it was first built, and specifically where it, but that's a whole nother conversation. That's a whole nother conversation. I love the police station being there, I can say that upfront.
I thought you wanted it in District Six, or was that just six substations?
Well, I, I do, I do want a substation in Washington Shore.
Commissioner, I'm not gonna get it in the middle of this one.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor. Okay.
I'm not done yet, though. But really, as it relates with the, the whole aspect, you know, I get the picture, you know, highs, best use, I get the picture as it relates with development and the opportunity, and as Commissioner Lyman so eloquently spoke about, was that Hughes Supply Development that, that came, came down into the area and has obviously done a great thing for that portion of downtown Orlando, too, and I see this as it relates with even being more and bigger and larger than life. But, but the real concern for me is to make sure that we are looking after these merchants that have been here, and how do we really include them? And the other aspect you and I talked about was the rents. Now, you know, they're paying rent to the city of Orlando, and it is, you know, remarkably good, as it relates with the low cost for their rent, but at the same time, when you've got new development coming in and you've got new buildings, rent is gonna go a little bit higher and that kind of thing, and whether or not they're gonna be able to support that, I don't know, but we are into the study aspect, but those kinds of things are, should be looked at, too, as we look at the study aspect.
And I would just reiterate, Commissioner, you know, the, the merchants are one of the three primary goals that I pointed out, you know, during this feasibility study, and we're gonna look at all aspects. And I would contend that when all is said and done, and those merchants, you know, that are operating in the development, in the new development, if it does come to fruition, you know, will have an even greater benefit today, or in the future than they do today because of the additional mass of people that that development will be bringing to their doors.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, why, Commissioner, why don't we go ahead and take your motion, do the public testimony? We were kind of more on debate at this point than we are questions.
I will move to accept a proposal, and I'll come back with that comment later.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Ings. All right, I'm gonna open this up to the public for testimony. Anybody that wants to testify, please get an appearance request up here. I have two appearance requests, Patty Schmidt, the dessert lady, and then Garrett Sekwar.
My name is Patty Schmidt, and I am the dessert lady, and I am a four-year Church Street Station survivor, and my friend Bob Snow used to talk to me about the way to succeed downtown was to have critical mass. Well, he was right. I want to share with you that I just had my best month ever in July, at a time when it's supposed to be slow, because of the Amway Center. And as Alex said, the Amway Center, it does supply that critical mass, but not 365 days a year. A development like this would be so important to my business, and I have no doubt that if the Magic do it, it will be done in a first-class way. I, I don't doubt that for a minute. And I want to share with you that I, I'm a native from Tampa, and I go to Tampa every week to see my mother, and we are light-years ahead of Tampa in downtown development. That place is a ghost town on the weekends. We should be so proud, this is wonderful downtown, and I just say, let's keep going.
Thank you, Patty. And Garrett Sekwar?
Hi, it's, it's Gannett Sekwar.
Gannett.
Yes.
I was close, I couldn't read the letters.
It's okay, I'm used to it. I'm Gannett Sekwar, and I've been a business owner on Church Street since 2005, and I was a tenant of the city, 400 West Church Street. So, when it was a plan to demolish it and make it an arena, we were told and we were guided by the city, and I'm very proud to be part of the city, and I'm very excited about this new change, that from this experience, I have changed my business and benefited from the arena's construction, and the city and the Magic was greatly helpful to me, and I'm the result of the, one of the merchants. And I'm very excited about this new plan, and that I believe in Mayor Dyer and Commissioner Lyman, making sure that the merchants and the entrepreneurs are not forgotten or left behind, and I wanted to say that I'm excited.
Great, and you can hold us to that, okay?
Yes, all right, thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak?
Alonzo Adams.
Alonzo, come on up. All Tied Up.
Well, hello, good evening, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak. My name is Alonzo Adams, and I'm owner of All Tied Up Men's Clothing Store. I've been there, located on the Church Street block area since the year of 2000. I'm a native of Orlando, and I love Orlando, I grew up in Orlando, so I'm always about the development and growth for Orlando, because this is my hometown. Anywhere I go, anywhere, I always like to ensure people that Orlando is the best place to come, so I'm with the progress. My, my questions are, and I have some, I guess, insecurities about the development. When the arena was built, it was just placed there to me. No one asked me one question about whether or not it should be built, or it shouldn't be built. The survival through that time of construction was that the city and the Magic allowed us help because it paid rent. But who opens up a business just to pay rent? I think nobody opened a But who opens up a business just to pay rent? I think nobody opened up a business just to be, just to pay rent. I don't think I was there just to pay the rent for the city. So in that, it really hurt my business a very, a lot. Nobody asked one question about the hurt. Now we're in a phase, now they're going to be an impact study done, but there was not an impact study done prior to making the arena. And my question was, why not? Because it brought trouble to the neighborhood, and no one asked any questions about it. Well, we're going to do a feasibility study now, because it's an investment now to see whether or not it's going to be good for us or not good for us. Well, I'm always with improvement. I know that if you take a hundred million dollars and you spend a hundred million dollars, it is going to be a plus, without a doubt. I know it's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring excitement, it's going to bring new time. And I just want to know that, and these are things that should be worked on, and I'm, like the questions are, the survival of the people that's already there. I've been there since 2000, and when I was there, when it was nothing there. And so when things changed, that, you know, when they say, right, well, you know, there had not been business year-round, well, I've had a year-round business, proud to be in there, because we grew from day to day to day to day. And I look forward to that. I started my business out, and we started out with the hope of helping bring businesses downtown to Orlando that people can be proud to come to downtown Orlando with. That was one of the things that the city stressed to me when I first opened up, that we wanted to be part of something that would make downtown very great. And I wanted to be a part of that, and I still want to be a part of that. So what, what my thought and feeling is that I would appreciate and hope that the things that I hear today for is allowing the vendors to be there to help them grow, will actually be what that is. And that's what I wanted to say.
Alonzo, we appreciate you. And your business is one that's a destination business, that people drive to specifically to shop with you. Not all of the merchant businesses along there are necessarily that, but I think both you and the rest of the merchants will be enhanced, maybe, well, maybe not the bars, but your business is not as dependent on people that are coming to a Magic game. They generally don't stop and buy a suit on the way, and they might buy a tie, but not a suit. But I think having a office complex, and potentially a hotel, and other businesses that you have, five, 600 people going to and from each day, will certainly be an enhancement for you in terms of the traffic that'll come to your business, and see your business, and get to know you, and want to shop with you.
Well, Mayor, I'll accept that. And if Alex says that, that means that I'm going to be there. That's all I want to know.
I'm going to be there.
Have you got Alex in any suits yet?
I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to get in there. And so, you know, my thing is that I'm, we're growth 100%, you know, and I've been working hard to develop something that I think makes Orlando proud. I, when I go places, and people tell me, hey, man, I traveled to Orlando, I came to your shop. Well, those things is that what I've been working to try to do, and we try to give the best service that we possibly can to make our town seem to be a great city. So I'm proud of it. And so, just my thing is that, you know, with what's all going on, I know money bring about changes, and I just didn't want to be changed out.
We're going to make sure they take care of you, and we take care of you, Commissioner Lyman.
I need to respond to you also, because when you moved there, before you moved there, if you remember, there was a ladies shop.
Yes.
That went out of business.
Yes.
And before that ladies shop went out of business, in 1999, we started having charrettes all around Paramore, and all the landowners and whatnot. So you moved in just as we were going through all of that.
Yes.
And maybe nobody sent you a personal notice to say, hey, we're having a meeting over here tonight. But we did. We had them all downtown, on Paramore, Callahan area for a year. And so we did, it wasn't a feasibility study in the sense it was, but it was some planning and master planning. And you probably came in in between, and you were so focused on getting your business established, that you didn't hear about the good news, that we were meeting, and things may change.
Yes.
So you would have been contacted. And at the time of the event center going there, we had lots of, lots of discussion. And I know several ways we could have probably helped you more. And I've already had that conversation with Alex and some other people. And I don't think up here is the place for me to have it, but I will talk with you more about it. I'd rather trust somebody I know. That doesn't mean it's going to happen that way. You know how friends and family are. Sometimes they're the first one to kick your butt. But, but I'd rather take a chance on, on a relationship I have and know about, and doing goodwill. And I think you and I had this conversation before about something, and that maybe we can engage this, this development company in. I'm not particularly saying, and I don't even know whether Alex is saying that, that during this process, everybody would necessarily, quote, stay where they are, but will be in a place of survival and business daily. I think that's for us to sit down and talk about and, and move forward on, not necessarily a public debate here, about the details, when we haven't even taken a vote on it. But I, if the Lord is willing, and I survive this, I'm going to do just what I've, what promises I've made through the years. Now, I'm one of seven, and when I tell people this, I have only one vote. And when I'm voted down about something in my own district, and that can happen, and it does happen to any and all of us. So I'm just asking people to let us work this out, and I suspect that you're going to be just fine.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alonzo.
Mr. Murray, and I accept that.
Keep us in your prayers, son.
Come on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, guests. My name is Andrea Brown, and I've been in Orlando since 92. And when I decided to become an entrepreneur, I looked for a black community. Maybe the business that I chose initially was not the right business for that community, but you guys have given me a chance to open sweet stop candy with my son, Bilal Mohammed, who is not here today. When I heard about the new Amway Center coming first, there was a button that says, do them now, do them all, do them right. I still have that button in my trunk. And today, I'm standing here because changes are coming, and changes are good, and I embrace that. But I'm wondering at what cost, and if my business will be able to sustain another disruption, and will I be able to come back at what cost in that new development?
We don't have the answers to that. We are going to make sure that through the process, that everybody is treated fairly and taken care of. Exactly how that's going to evolve, we don't have every answer today, but we have heard it all. You've gotten both my commitment, Commissioner Lyman's commitment, and Alex's commitment, that one of the top three guiding principles as we go through this feasibility analysis is to make sure that the current tenants are made whole. So rather than try to guess, you know, what's the best thing for you, you're going to be engaged directly in telling the group, you know, what your needs are, and how we might accommodate them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pastor, come on up. Hey, anybody that speaks that hasn't filled out a card just at the end, fill out an appearance request card.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Alex. Mine is simple. Now, we're going to have 300 jobs. I'm community-oriented, like you, Commissioner Lyman. 300 jobs are going to be coming to community. Now, are any Paramore ites going to be able to qualify for any of these jobs?
Absolutely.
That is always the question that falls in my mind.
Yeah, I think, Alex, you didn't mention this, but we've at least had preliminary discussions that the, even though this is private development, that we would adhere to the principles of the blueprint that we established.
It's in the packet. It's a part of the agreement.
I can't see, Pastor's a little bigger than...
Yeah, I'm a little wider than Alex.
On page one of the agreement.
Blueprint.
It's on page one?
Yes, it is. Yeah, feasibility.
Yeah, it is, it is in the feasibility agreement.
That's all I ask.
That was one of the first things Alex and I agreed to.
I'm so glad to know that you all agreed, but now that it has been open, I...
And recognize, there will be, just as there was with the Amway Center, there will be the construction jobs during whatever the construction phase is, and that's easy for us to do with a blueprint. If the Magic brings their corporate headquarters down, they're going to, they have existing employees that they'll be relocating. But if there's a hotel, if there's a other retail establishment, all those will be brand-new jobs.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And also, if it's a hundred million dollar development, that means CRA between the county contribution and the city contribution, that's about a million dollars a year in TIF that would come from a development of that type. Okay, anybody else that would like to testify? Yes, ma'am. Let's see, Ed or somebody? Are you Cheryl?
You're going to have to speak up.
Miss, are you Cheryl Renza?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I made a speech a couple months ago before I had hip surgery about a sidewalk. And I would like to thank all the Commissioners of the city and the county, because it's kind of on the borderline of the city and the county. And that, putting that sidewalk in made it a lot easier for me to get to the bus stop on the corner of 436 and Hoffner. And even though there's only a sidewalk from the corner of there to the bus stop, that helps, helps out a lot. And all the signs that have been put up because of my complaints. And I also had a sign put up by DOT when they called me directly and sent me a letter stating that they're putting up a pedestrian crossing sign, so people know that pedestrians cross there frequently. And I'm so glad that's been done. And thanks to Commissioner Diamond and Commissioner Damiani, who probably had to collaborate on all this. And blame me, I'm going to thank them tomorrow.
Okay. We appreciate you coming. Guess what? Most of the time when people come for general appearance, they come to complain, they don't come to thank us. So it's always nice when we have handled something for you to...
It feels good.
Yeah, feels good. All right. All right, that's a good one to close the public hearing on. So Commissioner Ortiz, your lights on.
Those were so good news that I think I forgot what I was going to say.
Yeah.
I totally think I did.
Okay. And discussion, debate, Commissioner Lyman.
Now, you know what it feels like. Get rid, open your mouth, and have a brain awakening. Just a comment I want to make. Everyone is talking about the concern about development in that area. During our travels, I saw something else, and I came back and I talked to Byron about it, and Lori, I think, Lila, Vivian Bryant, and a lot of folks have been engaged in this for a number of years. So it's not just one person having an idea about something around the event center. I've had a vision of, I have visions, too. I think I'm an architect, I think I'm a contractor, I think I'm a lot of things. When I started doing business with people, don't I tell you how this ought to be? And I'm sure when you're in the seat, you have to have those kind of visions. But I wanted to share of something I've been working on with Byron for years, and I'm sure he has shared it with the mayor. I don't want to say what it is, per se, but in Charlotte, we got in there with their new arena, the one that's in town. And while we did our tour, we walked out the back door, and just at the back door was a Ritz Carlton. And it wasn't open, it was just being developed. So for years, I've wanted something like that to happen, and different people have come in. These experts had assured us during the years that at the time, Paramore just was not ready for the vision I thought we could do and simulate some of the things we saw while we traveled from Charlotte to Memphis to, like Alex said, many places. But it has been a desire to do a little bit more in terms of highest and best use, without removing a population of people out of Paramore, that to me, a dear. And those are the people that we call Paramore heritage. The one thing I keep in mind, and All Tied Up, Ms. Alonzo's talked to, was, and I think when we kicked off pathways, Mayor, I stated that there's plenty of room for diversity in Paramore, but I don't believe in my heart there's room to get rid of any group of people. I think this is a great opportunity, but we have to be very targeted in how we do this, to make sure Orlando does not repeat what other cities have done in gentrification. There is nothing wrong with gentrification. The word simply means going back to a middle-class status, or achieving a change, a transition. And I do not wish to see people who have made Paramore their home, or their businesses for 70, 80 years, 100 years, pushed away. I believe communities that have great diversity, great architecture, great mixtures, neglected type of, you know, buildings, make a greater community. I don't want to see everything that looks alike. I don't want to see all glass. I want to see some little houses. I want to see children playing together in the streets, and having places you can walk to, to eat, and buy a suit, and buy shoes, get your medicine, the things that we have the capacity to do there. Church Street was a main business street in Orlando since I was a little girl. Paramore Avenue, the other, and those are the streets we wanted to help those businesses develop. But I just want to share that, and that was like letting my secret out, because when Alex and I was talking, I was like, oh, that's my idea. One of those ideas of his, was an idea I had for a long time. But there's plenty of room in the future, and some of us will see some of the things that are going to happen, and some of us will not. But I suspect, as long as I'm here, that I'm going to be fighting for a Paramore that changes, but one that will make room for the people who've been there, and ensure there is room for the people who've been there through the centuries, and through, not even a century, through the decades, when that community was developed in the early and mid 40s. So I feel if given that opportunity, I will work with all of the folks in Paramore and Callahan to achieve these goals. I thought that that's where we were headed, and I just wanted the assurances that I do not take my eye off the prize, ever. I work diligently in my district. I am very, very careful about families. I have great respect for history, great respect for the merchants and businesses. I know about owning businesses and operating those businesses. And I know nobody wants to be pushed over and braked over, and you can rest assured, as long as I'm here, I will not be the one to do it. If it's done, it will not come out of my mouth, it will not come out of my action, and it will not come out of my vote. Thank you.
I don't know which one lit up first, Commissioner Stewart, then Commissioner Sheehan.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just share just a couple of comments. It was, I think I may have attributed part of the issue. I want to share a special apology, Alex, to you and to some of you. I raised some questions concerning some of the intent of what you're trying to accomplish by, when I looked through the, the contract. Because some of the things that scared me as I looked through it was purchase option, and negotiation of purchase option, and those types of things that, that really kind of got me a little bit concerned. I completely agree with your concept, and, and when it gets converted legally, I don't just aren't quite so good at that as I would like to be. I do have some concerns about something in the future. I have concerns about coming back to this council, and what will be the emotional state of this council once you've made a $2 million investment to a feasibility study. I do have some concerns about, in an ideal world, I'd like to see a larger area. If it were, you know, up to me, I'd like to be able to have you help us in terms of looking at across the street and division. I think that... I think that, that Mr. Adams is right, that we do have an opportunity here uniquely to look at some other broader spectrum to see, is there something else and not just one building, but broader than that? And, and maybe we can work towards that as you see some of the responses you get back in some of the work that you're doing. Because I think that that's probably what the, the citizens of our community are asking us to do, is to make sure that this is not a good investment across the street from the, from the event center, but a good investment for the community that will impact the area. So I did raise a couple of those questions. I wanna make sure that we understand that, that it took a lawyer, it took the, you know, president of the Florida bar to come and explain to me why, what I actually, what I actually was reading and I appreciate that so much, ma'am. Man, I, I am, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a good project. I can't imagine somebody who's more vested in our community than you are. And I say this, I told this to somebody the other day. You got a 25 commitment, 25-year commitment on that building that you're sitting at. And you got 24 more years. And so given the choice of all the people that are gonna be moving down the track, I'd like the guy that wants to keep that building occupied for 24 more years to be able to make some kind of investment, cause I think that's what's important to that community. And I think 25 years from now, you're gonna say, we made a great investment, let's go and do it 25 more. So, thank you very much, Alex.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Thanks, Mayor. And my comments are, this, this is an open, public process. A feasibility study does open up the process to competition, even though granted, it's a limited pool of applicants, nobody's got the ability probably to finance something of this degree, but, you know, gives somebody an option to look at what you've studied and potentially come up with a better deal. So, I mean, this is an open, public process, so I hate to hear this, you know, insider trading, dirty deal. It usually means somebody who just doesn't have any vision, who just doesn't understand what the, what actual real estate investment means. This is an interested party because of the proximity to the facility they use. It's not a dirty deal, it's just simple, good business. So I think this makes sense and lots of sales happen between private individuals and, and all the time without advertising. That's not what we are proposing here. This is not a sole source agreement. This is simply an opportunity for the Magic to see if this makes sense for them and would make sense for us. So again, even when we do any leasing for our facilities, you know, we don't always open, we, we try to find people that we think would be a good fit for the area. So, you know, I know there's always been this perception of, you know, oh, we're doing something crooked and all this kinda thing, which I really don't think is happening here. I think it's disingenuous and I think it makes people distrust government and distrust investment and that's a shame because we're trying to do a good thing here. I support the feasibility study. That's what this is and that's what we're doing and I think it's appropriate for us to move forward and I appreciate the Magic's interest and I think this is good business. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
I just wanna reiterate that I support the way we're going about this, the fact that there's, if it does happen, the possibilities with the Sun Rail, possibilities, well, not the possibilities, but if it does happen, you will be part of the CRA downtown, which is an integral part of our community. And I would be lying if I didn't tell you that I'm really interested of what's gonna be happening to our very own Orlando Police Department, because I can wait to see a new police department, a new building, state-of-the-art building for our great heroes of the police department. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Ortiz. Commissioner Don.
Thank you. And just to the comments about that this is just a process, this is just a study, why don't we just do an agreement that says the city will agree not to sell the, sell the land for the next year or whatever we choose and in the meantime, open it up for other folks to submit their proposals as well?
Anybody else? I'll close. Alex, I appreciate the corporate partnership that the Magic have brought and the notion that you guys would go ahead and invest a hundred million dollars in our community. There's not a whole lot of cities in America right now that would be turning up their nose or questioning motivations behind expending that type of funding. Obviously, you're the biggest tenant at the building that was constructed for the public. You would have the most interest in what goes on across the street. I agree with Commissioner Linum, I agree with Commissioner Stewart, I agree with Commissioner Sheehan and Commissioner Ortiz and Commissioner Ings, that we know you, we know that you do quality development. When you came to us and said, we'll do a hundred million dollars, I did say it has to be transparent, we have to have a process. People will ask, why did the Magic get to do this? And it's because they came up and said, we have a hundred million dollars, we wanna invest. Where do you want to invest it, Mayor? Well, let's invest it where we've said the next place to develop is going to be. But if somebody in the next year has a counterproposal, that's, they have the opportunity to do that, since we've been here for a while and we've had all types of people come through and talk about investing money in Paramore and never doing it or never following through on it, I kinda doubt there's gonna be anybody else that has the same urgency to make sure that the other side of the block redevelops. So what we'll get out of it in addition to that development is the TIF that I talked about, but also for the merchants along the street, Patty talked about it, having the density where other people are coming and then increasing the number of events. Is Alan still out there somewhere? I don't know. We, whatever we do, 106, 150, 160 events, this will give us the opportunity to boost the number of events that are actually conducted in the Amway Center, probably to over 200 a year. And that's an extremely positive note for anybody that's doing business in and around the downtown. So I just actually wanna say thank you for being willing to, or thank the family for them being willing to continue to invest and have that type of commitment for the Paramore neighborhood. With that, on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Aye, those opposed?
No.
Six to one, the motion carries. I believe that is all the business before the Orlando City Commission today. Do we have any further general appearances? Then, without objection, we're adjourned.